...for retreat. And you definitely went to that. I didn't try.
If we had a sergeant-at-arms, I'd be putting them to work right now.
A lot of times I tell people when they comment on the shirt that it's not my wildest, but I can't say that today. This is, in fact. Be wildest. My wife saw it and she said, "You're wearing that?" I said, "Yes." But we all know that usually means you're not supposed to be wearing that. So council, we're going to do the pitches a little bit differently than last year. We have a different evaluation system for them as opposed to the push-button and discuss. So I'm very briefly going to walk you through how we're going to go about this and then we will proceed. So as each council member comes up to give their pitch, you'll have eight minutes to present. It doesn't sound like a lot of time, but it's a lot of time when you're the one talking. Of course, the PowerPoints are up here and are they being controlled here at the?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so that's coming along. So you'll have eight minutes to present. We do have timer boxes over here. When it gets down to the final 10 seconds, it beeps rather loudly and then switching it back to start for the next person makes some loud beeps. So when you hear loud beeps, that means your time is ending. At the end of the eight minutes, or sooner if you finish sooner, don't feel like you have to use all eight, the rest of the council will have three minutes to ask questions. Now, that's not questions to debate the merits or talk about what you like or don't like. It's just questions so you can better understand the pitch so that you know what you're evaluating. And if there's something you didn't quite understand or didn't know how it would apply, that's your time to ask. There will be time later on if you want to do a discussion about merits. And then after that three-minute period, you will be able to do a three-question evaluation on that particular pitch. Jason is going to send, or has already has, but you're about to receive an email in your C email account that has hyperlinks to the evaluation form. So when you are ready to evaluate the first pitch, you click on that hyperlink. It'll bring up a three-question form. I want to go ahead and pull it up before then, just to save loading time. The Internet sometimes runs slowly. It's a three-question. Your first step is going to be to pick which pitch you are evaluating. It's a drop-down menu. You click on it, you scroll down, you pick the pitch. We ask that members not evaluate their own pitch. We assume you like it, is why you're pitching it. So select the pitch you're evaluating, the one that you just heard. Then there's three questions. The first one asks you to rate the importance, in your opinion, of that particular pitch. How important is it to the city now and in the future? And there's four, three, two, one importance, and it describes that. Then the second question is priority, is urgency. How urgent is this? Is it something that needs to be done right away? Can it wait a little while? Can it wait for a long time? You'll have those four, three, two, one options in front of you. And then the third question is about funding priority and funding timing. When should this be funded? Or pardon me, this is, um, how should it be funded? It's got four different possible ways to fund it, and it asks how you feel about those. Do you love it? Do you hate it? Or somewhere in the middle? And again, it's a four-point scale. So it should be fairly simple, fairly quick. Once the evaluation is done on the first pitch, we'll move to the second pitch and the third and fourth and so on. And the nice thing about the system that Jason and ITS put together is we'll be able to get the results almost immediately. I'll have to run and click on something, but we'll have them almost immediately so we can show you the results at that point.
Is it public?
Yes, ma'am. If anyone wants to see the breakdown of the input, it is public, and we will be able to get you a printout. We can print it out for you today that shows how each individual council member rated each individual pitch. So that will be available as well. I thought I had more people coming to me. So are there any questions from council about how we're going to proceed?
I don't know that I'm getting service that I'm going to be receiving, so I may need to go to a, um, what's the?
Chris is behind you.
Yeah, because my Internet's coming and going.
If it's an IT question, I am almost useless, but we have at least two experts in the room. While Chris fixes that, any other council questions?
Are you doing your rating after each pitch or after you've heard all?
After each pitch. You're going to rate each pitch totally individually. Just, you've heard the pitch, you've seen what's being presented and suggested. How do you feel about that? We aren't going to compare the six pitches until we have the results for all six pitches. They'll put them up there and you'll see how they compare.
First pitch, Councilman Gilmore.
All right. So this past week, I went through my house and I decided that we need to take a look at recycling. Recyclable, yes, no? Yeah, totally. Recyclable, yes, no? Single-stream recycling, in your household recycling bin. Let's not, it's not trick question, okay?
Everything's empty out of it.
Yeah, if everything's empty out of it. All the plastic forks and knives, no. But it says it's recyclable, right? Is that recycle only for the box? Is it for the plastic inside of it? Okay, gets confusing. Recyclable? breadcrumb? Not recyclable. It's got aluminum foil on the inside of it. But it says recyclable on the lid. Plastic pouch, recyclable? Nope, especially with food in it. Chunk of wood shelving, recyclable? You'd think no, but they show up all the time. Let's see. Recyclable, it's plastic. It's Nintendo Wii toy. Yeah, and not recyclable in your home recycling bin. No recycling logo or anything on it. Recyclable? Bug spray. Totally if it's empty. Totally recyclable. It's metal. It's your metal container, just like your aluminum cans or any of those. Totally recyclable. Metal? Recyclable? Not in your home stream. Yes, if you took it to a metal recycler. Not in your bucket. Recyclable? Yeah, it's a seaweed container. Not recyclable. It's a foil and plastic mix, so blended material cannot be recycled. Recyclable? Yes, no? Taco Bell cup? Yes, except for the straw. Recyclable? Plastic bouncy frog, made in China. Not recyclable, even though it's 100% plastic. Not in your home side bin. Water bottle? Not recyclable. No logo on it. Wrong kind of plastic. Oh, here's a good one. Number four plastic. Do you see? You can't see this. This is number four plastic. This is number four plastic. Same plastic. Recyclable? This one's not. This one, I had to call. I had to call corporate. Is this recyclable? It's not because it does the same thing that Styrofoam does. Even though it's not Styrofoam, it collects dirt and grime, so it builds up a static charge. So it's only recyclable in a single stream, not in your, uh, I'm sorry. It's only recyclable in a business stream context where it's just this material, just like Styrofoam. Not in your home. So that is a week's worth of TJ just looking at random garbage in his house and is it recyclable or garbage? And as you can see, it can be very confusing. So I'd like to take just a moment and talk a little bit about our rethinking of recycling. So first of all, is it recyclable? You know, most of the time we see that logo and we just go, "Yeah." Well, that logo may apply to the box, it may apply to the lid, but it doesn't necessarily apply to the entire item that you're trying to recycle. So first of all, materials, as you can see, rapidly changing. I'm not even seeing Styrofoam now. I'm seeing expanded number four foam. I thought that was interesting. It was on a television. Usually you see Styrofoam for that. So recycling logos are used to greenwash products. I see recycling logos on everything. And then you go in and they're getting better. You can actually read and it'll tell you a little bit of information on the logo, but most of us are trained that if it's got the little three arrows, throw it in the bin. You know, if it looks recyclable, it is recyclable. And then we're conditioned really to do something that feels good. So I'm sitting there in front of that trash can and that recycler, they're sitting there side by side, and I'm going, "Man, I don't want, I want to help Mother Nature." And those guys in the recycling center, if it's not right, they'll fix it. So we, you know, it feels better to put it in the recycling bin, which is why we have 25%. Well, in Lewisville, it's a little bit lower, but on average in the nation, 25% of what goes in the bins travels to the recycling center and then travels out to the landfill, which is actually doubling down on not sustainable because it costs money and energy and all the other resources that it takes to haul that stuff twice. So we, really, the education, what we're finding in the industry is that education at the bin, when it happens, is the most critical. So why are we recycling? It used to be that we recycle because it was a revenue generator for the city. Costs us $35,000 a year now. Costs us $35,000 a year if we keep our contamination rate at the level it is today. If it gets worse, we pay more. So in a few years, the market may come back, but remember, recycling is a commodity-based business. And once you turn on the tap, you've got that flow of material coming in regardless of what the market is. So it can create some challenges as far as banking on recycling being a revenue generator for your municipality. Of course, recycling does extend the life of your local landfills, and that delays increased collection costs. Delays, because eventually that landfill will fill up. Of course, it also generates feedstocks for our businesses, and that's becoming increasingly domestic. We're not shipping it overseas. In fact, the market for recyclables, my company happened to be the eighth-largest exporter in America of materials. Eighth-largest, and it's because we recycle, it was recyclables. But we're finding that more and more domestic folks are starting to use it, which I think is great. We need to build that infrastructure here. Of course, we recycle to offset carbon in the atmosphere, to reduce cost of manufacturing, those types of things. And of course, it is the right thing to do when it's done correctly. The challenge is, is that we're not doing it correctly in the United States. It's creating some real challenges in the market in why we do things the way we do it, and it's very confusing for residents. So why do we need education? That's why. Recycling is incredibly confusing right now for people. You know, five, I hear I am four minutes in, and you're kind of going, "Well, what? What are we doing here?" And that's, I think, the question that we have as an organization, is why are we doing what we're doing? What's important about it? And why do we need education? What we're seeing is we're getting less recycling because people are getting confused. Our tonnages at the city are going down. Not much, but a little bit. You know, the more education you do, the more you get. We see that our single-family contamination rates are as high as 35%. Actually, that's pretty low for a city, but I know we're working on, staff has been working on some different containers and options for our single-family, I'm sorry, for multifamily. Single-family at as high as 35%. We're sitting at the 18, 19% normally. And then new multifamily containers are coming, but we really don't know what the impact is on increasing the quality of the recyclables that we get. That number is going to climb if rates continue. Of course, we do have a profit share that happens over a certain point, and I don't know exactly what that number is. But what we also find with education is that it's especially critical for first-generation recyclers. So folks who come from communities that haven't recycled in the past, they don't know. They have no idea. All of this stuff is completely foreign. And so that, even the chasing logo, they probably don't understand. So it's really important if we're going to get recycling to happen, which is why you show me a household with a third grader, I'll show you a household that recycles because that's typically when that education kicks in. Contractors are not going to do it unless it's baked into the contract. They're not going to educate unless it's baked into the contract because they're covered. I'm down to seven seconds. So my goal here today is that if we're going to continue our recycling program, we really need to rethink about education. I don't know if you saw in the news, Denton just went to tagging their carts. Happened two days ago. So they're actually going to have staffers wander the city and say, "Your cart has got non-recyclables in it. We'll collect it once you've cleaned it out." Education at the cart is key. We need to be working on a way to improve our recycling program, whether that's through more community education or whether we do an education at the cart program or both. So that's what I'm asking for, is that we figure out how we can get more education done within the community if we want to continue to have a robust recycling program.
So council, questions for Councilman Gilmore?
Yeah, I live in a Twitter world and you want me to live in a Wikipedia world. And a Wikipedia world is not going to work. The lid of my recycle bin takes me too long to look at.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Which is why you want to, so what you have to be able to do is get it down into a format that people can swallow.
Yeah, but look at the products you brought.
Sure.
How complicated can this get?
It can, it can be very, very complicated. So what you do is you supply cardboard, metal containers, plastic containers, plastic lids, and paper. Those four things.
And, okay.
If you get it down to that, it's simple. I agree, the stuff that's on the container is way too complicated. This stuff's way too complicated.
It is.
So can I get it down into the four key? That's what the industry is really moving towards, is these four key items. So we don't, we don't, plastics one through seven. You know what plastics number seven is? All other plastics. That's literally what category seven is, is all other plastics. Plastics one and two are the most valuable. They make up 85% of the stream, which is why the, so the industry is a whole need to change. But if we move people to an education of, "It's a container with a lid," or "It's a bottle with a lid," now your plastics argument is gone because that's your 85%, because those plastics with lids happen to be the ones and twos. So that's how you, that's how you get that streamlined and that type of education. There's a lot, there's a lot of material out there. We don't have to recreate the wheel, but I think that the goal is we need to have that education happening at events. We need to have that education, maybe even having a sample go through the neighborhoods. I'm not saying we have somebody follow the truck every day. What I am saying is that maybe you hit a neighborhood once a quarter and just, "Hey, you did a great job. Here's some more facts about recycling. Hey, you've got a garden hose in here. Don't blame them." Yes, sir.
What would be, I guess, the most effective way? Obviously, getting this out in the masses would be important, whereas where there's just a little video. And one thing, like in the events we do, I think it would be, I think it would be a fun activity if you say, if you took, like, the stuff that you have there, I won't call it jump, but you take, you take something like that and you kind of quiz people to, like, what's recyclable, what's not, to make it a little more fun and maybe that'll stick because I know in my house, and my wife may be watching this eventually on video, I mean, it's a daily debate.
It can be. It can be.
And even I get confused and I have to keep going back to the can to, you know, kind of points because she never believes me that she can't recycle some stuff, so.
It's the recycling industry's fault, quite frankly, that all of this is the way it is, and materials are moving so fast. You may have lived in one city where you had a certain recycling program and now it's overturned.
Yeah.
I mean, the expectation that the market will never change, that once it's recyclable, it's always recyclable and vice versa, I think that's a mistake, quite frankly. I mean, you don't expect that in any other market. But yeah, education, how do we simplify? How do we get this down into, you know, can we do four things? We need to get down into, like, four things and not plastics one through seven and whatever, you know, where there's 20 things on the lid of my container. Can we get down to four things? I think, I think we can make recycling a very positive experience for our residents, but I think we need to rethink our education and it requires some of that.
At every concert in MCL or Wayne Ferguson, our TJ should get up at the front and do his what's recyclable thing for two minutes before the concert.
I don't go to the concerts usually, but okay.
You will now.
Yeah, there you go. You got me going, so I can't even breathe in the same. Thank you guys for your time and attention.
So council members, other than Councilman Gilmore, on your screen, you now have the Lake Board, the Evaluation Board, so be sure you select which pitch you are evaluating so that it goes to the right one. And you hit there and go and mark your three questions about importance, urgency, and funding.
Is that how that works?
We'll know which one it is. We can take it out.
Oh, darn it.
If we see any that have six evaluations, we'll know something happened and we'll just pull that one. I guess if I were being mean, I could say if we see six, we'll just take out the best scores.
The best, yeah.
So next up will be Councilman Troyer. Everyone have a chance to complete the evaluation form? Any questions on the form itself? That was your first time to see it, so.
So easy, you better counsel if you can do it.
That was the idea. So this one advanced your slides, and here's the microphone.
As soon as he gets it up for you. You ready, councilman?
Okay, I'm talking, my pitch is about a multi-city bike event. That's bicycle, not motorcycle. I had thought about, I had thought about getting up here, doing a quick Superman telephone booth change into my cycling garb, but I thought probably standing here in my spandex would not be, would not be very, very good. Anyway, there's a national event that is coming up. This is the seventh, seventh year of the event. It's a Rails-to-Trails Conservancy event, and it basically kicks off the spring, spring trail season and encourages people, the organization encourages people to get out and hit the trails either on foot or on bikes or running or whatever. And there is a, there is a link here in the, in the material to the Trails-to-Trails organization's site. But this, what I thought about this is it's a good, it's a good opportunity for us to partner with DCTA and surrounding communities in getting people out on the trails, get them, get them to use our trails and become familiar with the trail system, interact with each other, and also get people from other communities into Lewisville to see what we have to offer. So we have, this actually is already in progress, and thanks to Councilman Gilmore and Keely Briggs in Denton, we've got this thing rolling. It is going to take place, this is going to take place this year on April 13th. So like I said, it is, it is in progress. Basically, what it's going to amount to is we're going to have trailheads in Denton and at the Highland Village DCTA stop. We will, hopefully, people will, will get people on bikes and probably runners too to go along the DCTA trail and see what's available along there. We also have, we do have Denton, Highland Village, and Lewisville are the confirmed partners in this, and then we're also working, we're also hoping to include Lake Dallas, Corinth, and regional bicycle clubs, like the Pathfinders in Denton. I've reached out to the Corinth, Corinth Cycling Club to see if they would be willing to participate. Haven't heard back from them, but what we are anticipating is that each city will have a, will provide information at the stops along the way promoting their city and city events that are going on. And again, this is going to happen on April 13th, 2019. Primary stations are going to be, the Lewisville primary station will be Highland Village, Lewisville Lake Station, and we're hoping to have some kiosks that point to things and local events going on, points of interest. What we're, what we're hoping for is that people will, from Denton, for example, will ride down to the Highland Village Station and then maybe go on into Old Town, ride on down to, or maybe take the train down to the Old Town Station and also connect to the other, to the other trails that are nearby. DCTA is really, has really gotten into this event big time. They're going to, they're going to give free passes, free day passes to people that participate. So if you happen to participate on this, in this event, and you get on the train and the conductor comes up and says, "I need to see your ticket," you just say, "Opening day," and you'll, you'll get a free pass for the day. They're also going to provide brochures. They're going to, they're just going, will have a passport that people will get stamped at various stops showing that they've been involved. And there are, there are waymarks along the way that people, if someone, for example, doesn't want to go from Lewisville all the way into Denton and then bring the train back or go all the way into Denton, ride, and then ride back, which is a 24-mile ride. If they want to do a six-mile ride, they can go from Lewisville up to Corinth and back, or they can go, there's several places where they can turn around, go back, and make the ride either, you know, three miles, six miles, whatever. So what happened there? Some of the future issues, let's see, yeah. Ideally, we'd have this go to Old Town Station, but the DCTA trail is not complete yet. Once it is, we'll be able to go into Old Town and this, in the future, hopefully, we'll be able to use the, go all the way to Old Town Station. And then as the, as the trail expands farther south, eventually, what I would like to do in the future is include Flower Mound, The Colony, and Carrollton in this event so we can have both east-west and north-south participation. The one good thing about the event is it's minimal, it has minimal impact on budget. We're estimating that this year, the budget cost is, it's probably going to cost about $2,500 to, for just staffing. One of the other future issues is that, as everybody knows, April is a busy season. So we may run into, we'll run into conflicts in future years with the event, but as we get the area bike clubs involved, most of the clubs have events going on in the, on Saturdays anyway, and so they would be, well, they will be able to participate, take some of the, some of the lead on doing this. But again, it's not, it's not a high, it's not an event that's going to require a lot of staff activity. And so the trail is there, DCTA, like I said, DCA is taking, DCTA is taking a large role in this. And hopefully, in the future, if we do have a conflict with an event, we can publicize that event at our, at our stations and have people go on and take, either ride onto the, like Color Palooza or Funny Bunny or whatever there is going on at the time. So there will be direct conflicts in the future. If it's Easter weekend, we won't have staff participation, so. Anyway, questions?
April, we just had a conversation earlier this week. Let's don't put another bin in April. I think that was with Donna. Was that, where is she?
I'm behind.
Was it you that I had that conversation with? Not one more in April?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Amazing, James.
It's the last Saturday before taxes. It's Funny Bunny.
Right.
And you're telling me it doesn't require a lot of staff resources. What staff resources does it require?
Uh...
Or have you really researched that?
We haven't, we haven't gotten a good idea on that, although we, the estimate is that this year, well, the impact, budgetary impact would be about $2,500. But once we get kiosks in place, you know, there may not be much, much to do anyway if we can get, if we can get things out there.
Each $2,500 estimate comes from having two people at the kiosk for the hours of, I think it was nine to one or 10 to one.
Nine to 12 is what we're explaining now.
And so having the kiosk and the possibility that there's some sort of material that we can hand to them that says, "Now that you're here, here's what's nearby." So two people at the kiosk throughout the event day, plus a little bit of printing.
And the advantage is it does get people, will get people here as I'm out and about, and most of you know that I'm out and about a lot, talking, talking to people. I'm continually amazed when people show up at, in locations in Lewisville from out of town and you start talking about what we have here, and, well, even, even people in town, but you start talking to people and they say, "I had no idea you have this facility" or "You have this," all of this stuff. And I think this gives us an opportunity of promoting, promoting Lewisville as a place to stop and do things, not just drive through on your way to Dallas.
It's not the event, it's the time.
It's what?
It's not the event, it's the timing.
I know, the timing is, the timing is a problem, except that it's a national, it's in conjunction with a national... in conjunction with a national event that is taking place anyway, so. And, yeah.
No, I like the idea. I remember in LC Summit where we went to LA, and they had the Cyclavie program, and that, I mean, it's a major program, they closed down the streets, and it's an opportunity for people to learn that city. With the multi-cities, I think what we need to figure out is how to have some touch points for people to either hit a business or something in each of these cities, to promote all of our cities as a regional.
We are working on getting businesses involved in participating as far as advertising their products and making, you know, maybe giving a big promotion for that day or something, so.
And even though there are a ton of events going on, the people that are into cycling, this is their event.
Right, this is the event that they would, yeah.
The other ones won't matter to them.
And it's family, it's a family-friendly event, and, but you're right, cycling people will, there are a lot of, there are a lot more cyclists in the area than we maybe know and are aware of. But it will involve a lot of people.
I think it's something that we could definitely support as a city. I think that it's going to, in my opinion, best be served when we can get the community to drive it, and get DCTA to drive it, and maybe put our support behind DCTA on that.
Right, I agree. And I think that, once the cycling clubs are on board, I think we'll have a lot of support there.
Thank you, Councilman Troyer. So, rest of council, it's your opportunity now to mark the evaluation form for this pitch. When I press the right button, it's much easier. There we go. And we'll start getting set up for Councilman Jones. So when he gets you up and running, this clicker just goes left and right. Mr. Troyer. The next up will be Councilman Jones.
Yes, I am. As a Toastmaster, I'm going to bring this in on time. Lakeside Bold Neighborhood Initiative. We're going to boldly go where Louisville has not gone before. That'll be the only joke I'll give for today, and that's just for one councilman in particular.
It's not getting you next, though.
I can try. So, the Lakeside Bold Neighborhood Initiative is under the Thriving Neighborhoods. Our goal is to encourage reinvestment and renovation of single-family homes. Louisville, we're pretty much built out, but we do have some lots, and we're targeting a specific area of the city to get people to say, "I want to build my dream home," and instead of moving to surrounding cities, to actually reinvest in their own home here in Louisville. So we want to give the homeowners incentives to grant residents and builders upfront cash tax rebates to demolish and rebuild or significantly renovate their existing units, and what we're asking for from the budget is $100,000 annually. So, we've looked at existing homes valued by the Denton Central Appraisal District at $245,000. So if a homeowner decides to demolish their existing home for a price of $12,000, the city would then provide a grant of $10,000, 50% of the eligible grant, $20,000 total. And upon completion of the new home, and assuming all the program criteria are met, the city will provide them with the remaining $10,000. And finally, they would get a, four years on their tax incremental property tax increase of $78 per year, $785 per year, $3,100. This new tax, minus the old tax value, would give us, so, I'm reading this thing a little too fast. What this will do is, it'll incentivize someone to build a new property that'll be more valuable to the city. It gives them a little tax rebate over four years, so they're getting a benefit for building this new home, because, as you know, the prices in Louisville are kind of through the roof. So getting developers to do some things here is kind of hard. So we're trying to get an existing homeowner who already has the land to reinvest in that land, to build up on that property. They get a break for four years, then after that four years, we have a new higher property value, and we'll get more tax. And here's some examples here. The original home worth $245,000, our tax value is $1,068. These are some guest estimates here. The new home will be worth $425,000, so we'll get an additional value of $225,000, and we're giving up $785 per year for the four years. But then, once, after that fifth year, it kicks into the new tax value, so we have basically a property with more value than what we had originally, and it's something that is an extra asset to the city. So, the cash grant demolition program, this is what Jason and his staff, and I want to thank him because he kind of took the initiative here, and what he did was, he combined this with what Farmers Branches does, and was it Ulyss? It was Carrollton. So he kind of did a hybrid program that what he thinks will work for the city. The applicant will be reimbursed, 100% of the cost of demolition, and cash grants will be issued in two payments, so they have to actually do the work before they get all of the money. And will receive, if the property is $200,000, they'll get a $30,000 cash grant, I guess above $200,000 to $265,000, they'll get a $20,000 cash grant. So as the value goes up, they get a little bit more money to help them out, or a little less money to help them out. The city property tax rebate for improvements, city property tax rebate is an economic development grant, equal to 100% of the difference between the city property taxes assessed and paid on the new property tax improvement value. And these are just the numbers here. So construction values will determine at the time of the building permit. The new construction value is the difference between the value of the new construction and the value of the existing house. All construction permit fees required by the city, including demolition fees directly related to demolition and rebuild, will be waived. Property must be within the targeted area that the city has identified. And this is the area that we have looked to target, because these lots are a little bit bigger, and it allows for someone to expand their property. And what's the, what's the, what do we call, what's the, it's the lakeside area? So, originally, I thought of Old Town, and what brought this on was when Old Town, they're trying to, they were trying to squeeze, like a condo into, multi-units into a neighborhood, and we decided to back off of Old Town because we're doing so much, so many other things, and the lots are a little bit smaller, and we could actually target this area where the lots would actually sustain a larger footprint for a house. So this is new, no, this is only for individuals, for individual homeowners. So we thought this would be a good start, and I know Councilman Ferguson has a different idea. This is just a targeted area, this is not, what we want to be careful of is, we're not trying to push people out of their homes. We're not trying to get new people to come in, but we're trying to give property owners an option. And like I said in the beginning, instead of, "I'm going to move somewhere where I can get a bigger house," build your dream home here in Louisville. That's the goal of this program. And that is the end of my presentation. I told you I'd bring it in on time.
So I've got a question for you. Let's say that they have an old home, but they don't necessarily want to demolish it, they may take part of it off and then build like, you know, add on to it. So like you said, these were bigger lots, so they kind of take an old home and make it into a new nice home, but that may still be a wing of the new home.
The challenge, that's kind of a renovation. The challenge of that would be, how do we figure out, how do we estimate that, and the property value in addition? This one is, at this point, and that may be something that we can look to add on to, to see if it's feasible, this is just strictly to demo the old house and build a new house as of right now. That's something that we can discuss. And if you go to Farmers Branch, you will see their neighborhoods where old houses, with a decent-sized lot, where they are building up new houses, and the program has been working for them, because like I said, it gives the incentive to buy that property, to build up a new property, and build up their tax base in those existing areas. What's generally happened is, has been people coming in. What we want for ours, though, we want to at least start with our people who are here and keep them here, and not have them move away.
But they're going to have to move all of their content out and find temporary housing for several months, right?
If they, that would be something that they would have to consider, yes. I mean, obviously, if you demo the house, yes.
TJ?
So your first slide actually says significantly renovate. So that, to me, means not demolition.
Jason wrote that up, and it's, 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 no, no, no. No, 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 I mean, it's a work in progress, because it's kind of a hybrid of what we've seen. The challenge, I think, and Jason will be able to answer this more directly, is, I think we want to stick, at least for now, we want to stick with demo-rebuild. We don't want to have, have to figure out how we calculate what the renovation is and what you, how much of a break that you get.
Yeah. I mean, I don't, you know, to Neil's comment, I don't know if that's not a bad idea to encourage renovation, but, you know, is there a floor? I mean, at some point, hey, I did my half bathroom, I get a tax break for three years, five bucks, bring it on. I don't know if we want to be managing that.
And that's why I think it's more of the demo-rebuild than the renovation piece. But like I said, this is a hybrid of what, to present to you guys, these are the best of what we've seen. Renovation, I'm not really sure if we're ready for that piece, and that's something that we can revisit and look deeper into. Any other questions? Man, I'm good. 13 seconds, no buzz on me.
Three, dime back to everyone else.
I have two more questions.
The timer, the timer has been flipped. The timer has been flipped. So council, it's your chance now to do the evaluation form. Be sure and change up the top, the drop-down menu, to change to Councilman Jones's pitch. That's your right. Forward is the right-hand button. Microphone here. Do we have a mic stand?
We did, we did, but it's not there.
Oh.
I got it, it's here.
We got duct tape somewhere. Probably not. Might be the wrong size mic for that clip.
Oh, is it?
We can have someone hold it if we need to. Physics. Oh, Melinda will hold it for you. Melinda is the mic stand.
Melinda is my mic stand.
So, council, have you been able to complete the evaluation form on Councilman Jones's pitch? Okay? In that case, if we're ready, Councilman Ferguson.
Okay, so, this is a little different take on impairment zones, and if you haven't looked at Local Government Code, Chapter 12, Subtitle A, not Chapter 12, but Section 12, whatever, Subtitle A, Chapter 378, you ought to read it, it's very short, and that makes a point in itself, because under that chapter, you pretty much can write your own rules. And so it's surprising what you're able to do. There's really three pieces to this proposal, but they all circle around using the impairment zones. The first is a single-family rehab. These are people located in a designated zone, I have a map at the end. They can invest $10,000 in renovations, this is for renovations upon completion, and assuming they meet all the criteria, we give them a grant of 25% of the renovations. So if they did $10,000 renovation, they get $2,500 back. For people who live in low-income areas, have a different program, minor home repair. This is generally for properties that have had multiple code violations, so it kind of is trying to solve the code violation issue, which obviously means there are problems with the house to begin with. They get a quote to fix a problem like fencing or remove a vehicle, whatever that cost is, because they're in the impairment zone, and they meet the requirements for eligibility and they're low income, they are able to receive refund for their work, and upon approval by staff and so forth, they get money paid directly to them. And the third one is a commercial renovation. This is different from the other two. This is in a business zone, and this is, again, setting up a zone. The idea initially would be the mall area in order to attract new investment or, and/or reinvestment, because they can receive tax abatements or other, you know, refunds. This is for larger vacant centers or centers that are in need of return to their former life. So, let's look at this real quick, I've kind of already run through it. Maximum available per property is $20,000 per year, so being 25%, this is the, you know, regular rehab. You can do up to an $80,000 improvement, you're going to get 25, uh, 20, sorry, $20,000 back, and you've got to obviously meet all the requirements. There is a clawback that we'll get to in a minute. Houses have to be at least five years old, and you can read the rest of it. So, well, it's in the book. So, the clawback is, and this was important to me, I didn't want this to be a flipper deal. So if they sell their home before one year after that payment's made, they have to repay 100% of it. So basically, you can't just flip in a year, less than a year. If they go two years, they get to keep 25% of it. If they go three years, they get to keep 50% of it. If they go, and this is just short of, if they go just short of four, they get to keep a quarter of it. If they make it through four years, they get to keep all of it. So basically, it's for people who want to stay in the home. It's not designed to be something to incentivize flippers. It's also not available to rental property owners. It is homeowners only. So, minor home repair, like I said, a little bit different rules, same clawback, they get up to $7,500 back, and you see examples, fencing, retaining walls, tree trimming, junk car, trash, graffiti, stuff like that, and see the same rules. And so this is the commercial version, could be property tax abatements, sales tax, permit fee waivers. By the way, the other people, part of what they can get is, in addition to the money, is a permit fee waiver. And we'll consider all of these on a case-by-case basis. This is the neighborhood zone for the family, so this is basically Bel Air up to, just behind the high school, and from, I forgot, did we go to the valley? No, we go all the way out to, past Old Orchard, all the way up to I-35. This is the proposal for the commercial version, this is obviously the mall. Questions? Go.
That first location, Zone 1, well, either one, Zone Area 1, Zone Area 2, I kind of get them all. What were the selection criteria for that?
The house has to be at least five years old, of course, it's got the clawback, so you can't, if you're not...
I mean, why that part of town?
Why that part of the, because we have a high number of code enforcement issues in that zone.
Great.
That's why that was chosen, is, because again, the program primarily, I mean, my first biggest, you know, wish was to address the low-income code enforcement issues, so that's the number-one reason for that area, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of...
Do we know if those houses are rentals versus owner-occupied in there? Do we have a split?
If they're rented, it doesn't matter, because you're not eligible unless you're the homeowner.
Right, but if it's got a lot of code enforcement on rental properties, we wouldn't have as much impact.
I'm not trying to address that.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Other questions?
Okay. I got, the reason is, there's other mechanisms for addressing that, and it shouldn't be to help pay for the improvement of...
No, my thought was, would you have less impact because you have less single-family homes?
Less impact to...
Less owner-occupied homes, I mean. I don't know, I was just asking.
I mean, from my point of view, it doesn't matter.
Sure.
Because there's another mechanism for that type of property. So, I'm not, that's not what I'm...
I'm not against this neighborhood, I just, you know, there's other neighborhoods too, so I was just curious why this one popped up. up.
Well, the other reason is, uh, I mean, there's, I could pick a lot of neighborhoods, but I didn't want this pro-
Just cover the city?
It's not really in the explanation, but it, you know, presumably if it works well, then you expand it to other areas. But you start somewhere and see how it works and this seemed to have a lot of opportunities.
Super.
And there is a fair, fairly high, uh, ownership level in this, in this area, so.
Okay.
Driving, driving that area every day to go up Fox, it definitely could use that help.
It's a, a lot of opportunity.
Yes.
Any other questions? I'm done. I got a minute left for somebody else.
I'll take two.
All right, council, now you have your chance to mark your evaluation form for Councilman Ferguson's pitch. Again, be sure to change the dropdown.
I'm gonna need you. Chris? It looks like this is a word box.
Uh, it's a blank.
I saved it. Okay, yeah. Now I just need to be able to mark on it and-
Okay. Should be good.
All right, so that's all we need.
You ready, sir? Yeah. Hey, uh, I don't eat toast, so I'm sure I'm gonna go over soon. Okay. Today, I'm here to plant a seed. And that seed is for a Lewisville Park Foundation, okay? So, we're planting a seed. We're not putting a container tree in here, so we've got an already pre-built project. We're planting a seed and it's gonna take a lot of work in the beginning. First of all, we're gonna need a lot of work from the Parks Department. So they're gonna be the ones watering this tree and they're gonna be the ones doing the heavy lifting. Kind of like KLB, they do a lot of stuff, but they really depend on the backbone of what the Parks does. And if you didn't know, because Stacy always wears lawn sleeves, she's got that little tattoo and you can see her bicep there, is the Parks Department helps water and kind of helps grow our tree, okay? So our tree's gonna start kind of growing from the seed, you know? And it's kind of, kind of grow. And one of the things that you're gonna need is you're gonna need some gardeners. So you gotta have some good gardeners here. And you notice, I chose work gloves because this isn't one of those boards that we get that they have four lunch meetings a year and then at the end of the year, they have champagne and pat themselves on the back for what great do-gooders they are. This is gonna be a working board. And I think we need to get people from a lot of different areas. I'd like to get maybe somebody from the chamber on there, that they have a standing member, somebody from KLB. Of course, there'll always be an advisory person, just like Stacy, and there's an advisory person on KLB that they're always kind of managing it. But then we need to get lots of other members from the community because it's gonna be this board that really does what they need to do to make everything work. The next thing we're gonna need, in the beginning, we're gonna need a lot of help from the city. And we're gonna have to have, I know nobody can see that, it says IT, because we're gonna need a great website to get people to it and be able to understand it. So yes, that says IT, yay, Chris. Because before, we're gonna really be able to start going and asking for money and getting things done and getting events set up, that website is gonna be crucial for marketing, for organization, and for all the things we do. So that's very, very important. Once we get that, we got our board, we got our tree planted, and you know, every once in a while, they may have to do, we may some, do some things that, we gotta get rid of some branches. So our board and this tree is gonna start kind of growing and everything, but it's not gonna grow very big without sunshine and donors. And guys, from the very beginning, this is gonna be crucial. We're gonna need to get money from wherever we can. We may need some corporate sponsorships, okay? We may need some naming rights, and we give them some naming rights of some areas. We may look for title sponsors for the website. We're gonna need money from everywhere we can. We may have that when they come to the city and we say, hey, what a great way, donate $20,000 to the Park Foundation is a great way to move to our city. We're also gonna need members, so members from the community, sustaining members. You know what? We may even want to do memoriam. So your grandmother and yourself used to always go to this park and you'd love to donate a bench, you know? So there'll be a bench and you can buy that bench with your grandmother's name on it. So any way we can get money because even though we got this tree planted firmly in the fertile ground of Lewisville and the Parks Department is watering it, without that money, it's not gonna survive, okay? So as it starts kind of growing and it kind of gets up here and we're starting to get big and we're starting to get branches and everything, the other thing that's important to make this strong and to have a true trunk is the volunteers. So we've got a ton of volunteers. We'll be able to use the man-hours from LHS that they all can never get enough man-hours for their activities. We're gonna have people that may want to volunteer their time at a local park, that all they want to do is, I live across the street from this park and I want to work at that park. That's great. We'll take their time and talent however they have it. Or we may have some people that say, I just want to plant stuff, I don't care where. We'll be able to use those. So it's gonna be crucial for the board to make sure that we use wise, efficient use of all these volunteers. And the other thing that I see as these volunteers start growing is there may be somebody that lives across the street from LL Woods, okay? So we have the Friends of LL Woods, kind of starts growing. There may be one from Memorial Park and it starts kind of growing. We may have one that all they like to do is swim, you know? So all of a sudden, Sun Valley has got the Friends of Sun Valley. There may be somebody for Central Park, you know? There may be somebody that, I don't really care about the parks, I just want to work with trails. So they're working with trails and they're doing trails. And in Memorial Park, somebody may say, you know what? I just want to do Thrive. So we can start getting volunteers that are working in different areas. And I think we try to take advantage of these people however we can get them and use them to where they want to go best, okay? So now that we've got the tree, it's growing strong, we're getting money coming in, here's the nice part is, is now we can start using that money for grants. So somebody from LL Woods, they may say, hey, we need some benches here, or maybe we need some playground equipment, or maybe we need a water fountain, or maybe we need a dog fountain. So we're gonna start getting structures that they can ask for bids from the foundation and of course, approved by the foundation, approved by the Parks Board, that we start putting in structures, you know, that they may be able to do. Maybe playground equipment, benches, whatever. So the other thing too, and guys, this may be the next biggest thing, is we may have people that, I don't want to plant or do anything but activities. If you take a look and you look at some of these other foundations, Austin and some of those they have, and if you look at their website, they'll have a little bit about cleanup, but they are the ones that activate the parks. So just like we have, you know, Wayne Ferguson Plaza, you can do yoga. We may have somebody that watched Robert De Niro teach Anne Hathaway how to do Tai Chi in The Intern, and they may say, you know, we had love at our park across the street. Can we do Tai Chi once a week? We may have somebody that they're into nature and we start getting nature walks, that they're teaching kids about plants and bushes and trees and bugs and birds and everything. I think activities, and I think we're gonna find our equilibrium once this board gets going, but activities is really gonna be the major thing. And if you look at some of these other boards, it's how they activate the parks, not as much about how they clean the parks and do all that. So that's gonna be crucial. But once again, they can get some grants because you know what? They may want to beautify the parks. I'm just gonna stick this here. So they give grants to plant flowers because they want to beautify the parks. And then we may even have a park that they want to do a bid and it's important for them and they think it's crucial to have artwork in the park. So each park gets its own artwork, you know?
I've already voted. I'm done. I'm done. Here, this moment.
So, like I said, this is a tree. We don't know which way it's gonna grow and I think once we get the board on hand and we start seeing it grow, we're gonna see it grow in a lot of different ways. But one thing I can tell you that it will need, it really needs a better name. And Lewisville Park Foundation, we all know it needs to be Lewisville Park fans and foundation. Okay. So questions?
I'm just surprised that you're such a good graphic artist.
So Neil and-
It's a really ugly tree.
Neil and I were discussing how we could start up a Friends of the Amphitheater Program?
Yeah. I think that one will probably be one of the later org-
Your later org, yeah.
So I just think every park with one of these, we make it. No questions?
How much, how much, I don't know how much you've looked into, into these kinds of organizations, but how much tension does this create where you have a foundation coming in wanting to put stuff in parks that may or may not be relevant to the park environment?
And here's the deal, and KLB is great, I, I use that as a great example because it's somewhat similar, but not.
But it's also got a large funding stream from the city, so it-
It has a large funding stream from the city, but, and I don't know who is now, when I was on the board of KLB, we had Lisa Weaver. She was our contact person. So anything we did that was related to parks, we knew ahead of time that it was gonna have to get approved. So it may be that there's some things that we say, oh, we want to put a swing set in this park and, you know, Stacy goes, no, that didn't work, that didn't fit, not gonna put a swing set in the park. And, you know, it may be that they're so persuasive because honestly, I don't know what LL Woods needs or, you know, Grady Park, I don't know what they need. The people that live across the street and the people that go there on a regular basis and take their families, they're the ones that know what they need. So I think if it's something that's that important, Stacy's gonna be able to either give a valid reason on we can't build it there because of this, or they can say, you know what? I'm there every day. You come there and look at it too and you'll see that we do need it. But yeah, there's gonna have to be a Parks Advisory Person that makes the phone call. It is our property still. Any other questions?
All right. Thank you. So council, again, change the dropdown to be by Councilman Daniels' pitch. You have your chance to mark your three questions.
Pardon me, dear.
I know you substituted the high school, but have you considered calling maybe an elementary or-
Have you been around high school before?
He's around me, so he probably can count that as good.
Microphone's right here.
All right, everyone had a chance to mark your evaluation form for that pitch? If so, then we are ready for Mayor Durham's pitch.
Can you do it? Somebody? Exactly off this, Tom. And I'll be asking you some questions.
I'm right here.
You ready, sir?
Yes. I'm here today to speak about the, uh, boards and commissions and possibly go into term limits on the, uh, different ones. There's gonna be some exceptions, the, the ones that we went through yesterday and already pulled those off and have some other ideas on those. They will not be included in this, but it all could go to the same, um, onto the same format. The history of the, uh, of the commissions, in September 91, ordinance was passed establishing two-year term limits for all boards and commissions and committees. In '04, due to lack of applications, uh, being received for these volunteer positions, ordinance is, uh, was approved by the City Council, um, to remove the term limits for all boards and commission. Anybody that was here then remembers, we couldn't beg enough people to come in to even talk to us about it. And that's why you ended up with some people being on four, five different boards. Members are now selected for two-year terms and at the end of each two-year term, they are required to submit a new application form if they wish to be reappointed. Typically, all, uh, members are reappointed. And what I'm looking at, the reason to consider a formal board rotation process, graduates of Citizens University are encouraged to apply for board appointments. After four years, 19 graduates are potentially new board members. This number will grow as we move forward. Basically, we're getting plenty of people applying to be on the, uh, boards and commissions. Castle Hill's annexation will bring in new residents that are potential board members. Council should consider striving to obtain Castle Hill representatives on designated boards. Board rotation allows City Council to strive, to strive to obtain diversity on each board and the rotation of board members allows for better development of community leaders and fresh board perspectives. What we're, what I'm proposing is, and this is worked through with the staff also, uh, after serving three consecutive two-year terms, transfer forms will be provided to the, uh, member three months before the annual council board appointment process. Transfer forms allow the member to select a new board on which they would wish to serve or to state a preference to end their service, basically asking them to move to another panel or go away. Not that way, though. It won't be done that way. Because there's another option to have them come back if, if the council wants them to be there. A board member may be considered for reappointment beyond six years when the City Council determines, number one, that no applications to serve on the board in question that meet a specific requirement, uh, have been received, and two, board membership requires specific expertise, uh, experience or professional certificates and extend, that extend the service beyond, uh, the typical time period. And this is what we talked about yesterday, uh, with the, uh, different groups and we basically exempted them from the rotation process. And I think, Donna, I need to have you look at the, uh, the ones that, that are left over from the part that we did the other day already.
Yeah, so all of those will not be impacted by what we did yesterday. Uh, and neither would any of those. So, so the ones that we impacted yesterday would be the Arts Advisory Board, the Animal Services Advisory Board, CDBG, and Library Board. The other three would not be impacted by what you did yesterday.
So the only ones that would apply to what I just spoke about were the, was it the last three on this page?
Uh, you could do the last three or you could do all seven. Again, because it's not really a term limit, it's an encouragement of board rotation to develop leadership in the community.
Basically, I'm, I was wanting to give a, uh, an option to the council to move people, uh, that, that we think need to be, to move on and be polite about it and ask them to maybe serve the community in another way or have them continue on that panel. And it would be up to- And it would be up to the council. And with that, I'm ready to answer any questions.
You brought up the Citizen University, and quite frankly, I will put it on the table now, I would be happy to see an ordinance that says that board applicants not requiring a special attribute must be graduate of Citizens University, period.
To be on a panel?
Unless they are required to have a special attribute, and they do have some board positions that have to have a special attribute. That would exempt them for that reason.
I wouldn't want that they had to be, but that should be considered.
Well, I'd be happy if they had to be.
But it takes away some of the other folks that would be very good in the community.
Or it tells them to go to Citizen University to be prepared. And I'm happy to have them prepared. And again, the exemption would be where a special attribute is required. So, for example, and this isn't a good example, but a veterinarian on the animal control board. That's a special attribute.
Have I gone through Citizen University?
Yes, sir.
I couldn't be on it either.
No, neither could anybody that's been on a board in the past, but that's the past, I'm talking about the future. So, the other thing I would have done is, you have a comment that says, "No applications to serve on a board in question that meet a specific requirement have been received." That's where they could, would not be considered for rotation. I would modify that language to say, "No suitable applicants to serve on a board in question have been received." In other words, I may receive an application, but if that applicant, if that applicant or those applicants don't have suitable skills, and I'm giving up somebody who does, then I don't want to do it.
That's a good point. Thank you.
You know, according to, I mean, I'm not going to be re-elected, I won't be a councilman next year, but if I wanted to be a board member, I couldn't be on the board because I hadn't gone through Citizen University?
That's the way I'm seeing it. I think there would be, that we need to not be hard and fast to rule, but take that into consideration.
And for something that requires a special skill that you have, then you'd have an exemption. So it's not absolute, depends on what you're applying for.
If we had a deal that it would be encouraged for people to do it? Yes, it's fine, but not that it would...
All right, back off to, the least I'd take is, applicants with CU graduation will be strongly considered before applicants without.
I wouldn't want that either. Just that it would be considered.
I'm going to ask the Rudy Durham question. What happens when we get out a few years from here and we don't have anybody applying?
We'd probably change the rules again. It was, to a point, that nobody was coming in to do anything. We were rocking along, and there wasn't any real changes going on, and there wasn't any, I guess it was after the Don Carter and Mavericks Arena, it got pretty quiet.
Yep.
And everybody was happy. And then, we needed to have some boards, new people on the board. And it wasn't unusual for some people to be on three or four boards. That's not counting the council being on.
And I'm of multiple minds on this, I mean, the reality is, we could fix this tomorrow. Council could fix this tomorrow, when we reappoint folks. I mean, we already have a mechanism for reappointments, every, what, every two years?
I think that's correct.
So, we could fix this tomorrow without creating a term limit or anything like that, just, we'd have to have the will to probably upset some people.
Yeah. Well, this is one of the things that Neil's talking about, putting it in somewhat into a statutory rule, even though we have some flexibility on it. That this would say, at least review that after two years.
Do you kind of know what that maximum is?
As Donna said, it would take, it would give the board member an idea of what the expectations are.
Yeah, no shock and awe.
Right.
Any other questions for Mayor Durham?
Thank you, Mayor.
Then, again, be sure you change the dropdown, and do your three evaluation questions for this pitch, and then we'll get ready to pull up your answers.
I'm going to work this exam.
I still see two people tapping, so.
We can turn the amphitheater since it's not ADA, we can turn it into a rope score.
So when we pull up the results in a moment, you're going to see a couple of different results here. You're going to see the results for the questions, so when we talk about, the first question is, how important is this pitch to Louisville? And you're going to see a score somewhere between one and four. And that's going to be the average of the five evaluations for the importance of that item. You're going to see a score for the urgency of those five evaluations from one to four, it's going to be the average of those results. We also put together a grid, basically an X-Y axis, if you remember your math, that's going to plot the importance and the urgency, and put it on a scale, so that we're going to kind of see, get a visual view for where in that grid that particular pitch falls. As we're going to pull those up, and then on the funding, be aware that there's a couple of these pitches that actually have no funding requests attached to them. The one we just saw had no funding requests attached to it. So for those, the funding question honestly doesn't tell us much, because if you're not asking for money, it doesn't matter when you give that, zero dollars. So for those, we'll probably just brush right over those answers, but some of them did have money attached to them, so we'll use it for those. So if everybody's ready, we'll pull up the response grid. Let's just do one at a time, please. Let's uncheck all except the first one. So again, what we see here, this is importance from one to four. It will be. I'll move to the other side. So, on the vertical axis, that's importance from one to four, the horizontal axis, that's urgency from one to four, so something down at the bottom. We see one marked down there, had low importance, low urgency. So that is a council member who said, "I don't think it's terribly important, and it's not terribly urgent." The ones that are on this end are more urgent, the ones on that end more important. So you can see visually that there's a variance in the apparent opinions, but it's weighted this direction. So let's switch to the multi-city recycling, or multi-city cycling. Yes, only the red. Take off the green, put on the red. So, again, very broad, it's kind of the lower half on the importance, and it kind of leans this way, so you've got a visual going this direction. We will pull them all up together in a minute, so you can see them all together. Let's take off that one, and go to the blue. Moving up in this direction now, that would be your heat map. And that would be me moving the board. I didn't mean to, I have a long thumb. Through the yellow. Yellow, wow, consensus there, all right in this area. Go to the pink. This is the Parks Nonprofit, the Parks Foundation, again, somewhat of a consensus. And then the last one, again, same little area there. So let's pull up all six of them. And this will, well, they're now all together, and what we see here again, is certain colors are showing up, like the yellow is all in here, the green flows up that way, the pink is largely in this area. If we, if we scroll down, do we get the individual? Here we go. So this was on the first one, so you had three responses here, one there, one there. Let's keep on scrolling down, or scrolling. This is again, the representation for the cycling event, for the initiative, the Neighborhood Bowl Initiative, the empowerment zones. Here's Councilman Daniels with his Parks Nonprofit, and then the board rotation. And, Jason, do we have a, oh, here we go, the tab for the question number three, the funding. Ah, right there. Okay, this gives us, that's what I was looking for, the raw numbers here. So here's where, I told you we were going to have a number from one to four, here's those numbers from one to four. So if you put them all side by side, which one does the group think is the most important to the Louisville? Was Councilman Ferguson's Neighborhood Empowerment Zones. 3.0, they have a couple 2.8s, 2.4s, and a 2.2. The urgency, that's, how quickly do we need to do this? 3.4 for Councilman Ferguson, oh, 3.6 right here. 3.4, 3.2, and then a couple of 2.8s and a 2.6. So that shows you the importance and the urgency, just kind of in a line, where you have the numbers.
So if I look at the timeline, what it's telling us, is the board issue, is the urgency?
Based on the responses today, the people who responded, the most urgent of these is the board rotation, followed closely by the empowerment zones. The most important is not necessarily the same, well, you see that, importance and urgency are not the same thing. Importance is right here, followed by the two beside it. So the Neighborhood Empowerment Zones, the Bold Neighborhood, and the Parks Nonprofit have more importance, but based on the timing, they're not as urgent as a couple of the others. Yes, sir?
Particularly to Mayor Durham, urgency for me on him is that there's no reason to delay. Urgency is not, "We're going to die tomorrow if we don't do this." So urgency has more than one meaning.
Yeah, that's true.
So, Councilman, what you mean by that is...
It's slow hanging fruit.
Yeah, we don't have to budget for it, we can basically have the policy.
So it could take a lot of work, no reason to postpone it, but we're not going to die if it isn't done tomorrow.
So what this tells me is that that would be something Julie would start on a budget.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, urgency has this connotation that isn't, in his case, what I deem urgency, it's just, there's no reason to wait, because it's pretty simple.
So as we look at the funding options, one thing we notice here is that the second line on every case is lower than the first or the third. What that would tell us is that there's not a great willingness to delay things you already have in process. If you're already doing it, you've already approved it, we're moving forward, you don't want to delay those things. You are more interested in either moving money, less for delaying planned future projects, but moving money in the existing budget, or creating and allocating new funding, very little interest in tax rate for any of these. So for all of these, you seem to be looking at existing revenue, or finding a new funding source, reallocating current. Those are the two lines that pop up on every one of them, and they kind of bounce back and forth between what they are, but they're all pretty close, 2.6, 2.4, 3.0. The biggest disparity is here. With all of them, you're showing here that you're not interested in raising the tax rate to fund them, and you're not interested in delaying your big plans, you're more interested in use the existing budget, just move some things around, or potentially finding and allocating a new funding source outside of the tax rate. Does that seem a reasonable consensus to the council?
So for next year's budget, what this tells me is to take Councilman Ferguson, and Councilman Jones, and Councilman Daniels pitches, and try to get that in base budget. If I can't get it in base budget, I'm going to put it on add back. Is that what you're telling me to do in next year's budget? Possible?
I think so.
Okay, okay, I'm just going back to you, is that the impact?
Yeah. I mean, I, I'm going to assume that we, if we keep the rate the way it is, we're going to see an increase, or maybe not as much increase as we've seen in other years.
Based on the economy.
But based on the economy and property rates, so.
I was calling Rudy about that.
Yeah, so these, you know...
There may be room for them.
Yeah, so, but, so any of these, and the continuum of improvement, you know, starting with PEP and moving all the way through, because I kind of see these, I actually see Brandon's and Neil's as just being two shades of the same project, because it's a continuum, right? You know, with the economy's not doing well, we're going to, this is not going to be a consistent thing, we're going to, we're going to walk that back, so, at least I would. Maybe I can't speak for the whole council, but that would be, that would be a home improvement when the economy, and I can't afford police, that would be a problem.
I think we'll see that once we see what the actual numbers look like. So if the economy is going down and we're not seeing an increase, yeah, we're going to push it back.
Yeah, yeah, we're going to push that back.
And what the legislature is.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we never know what's going to happen there.
Something like the Parks Foundation, it may need some seed, but hopefully become self-sustaining very quickly.
Right.
It should be. I mean, that's not going to really be a budget issue, that's a step, to step back and structure that.
Of course, I could argue that the recycling one, we're going to pay regardless.
I think the recycling one is very interesting, because that, at the curb inspection, is a staffing impact.
It is.
And I tend to agree that that's the next step, it's doing what other organizations are doing. If we want to clean up that stream, that is something I would like to see us ask for in next year's budget.
My concern is, that as long as recycling is a net cost, and as long as there's something in a contract that means that net cost is going to go up, if we get worse at it, then I want to figure out how I mitigate that cost.
But if the mitigation costs the savings, what are you...
That's absolutely, that's true.
That's the analysis, that's exactly the analysis. So, what I hear from this program today, number one, with the board rotation, Julie and I will immediately start working on, that would be a policy, Julie, a policy statement for the council to consider about your board rotation. Then, as far as budget purposes, we're going to prepare items related to the empowerment zone, Councilman Jones, Councilman Daniels, Bob's is a fairly, oh, and Councilman Gilmore, really, which is all doable. And Bob's really occurs with very little staff support also, I think, and is somewhat I think that gives me what I need, if I'm interpreting correctly. There are several that will be major impacts to budget, and there are some that we can move on immediately and get done within staff and resources. For example, Councilman Daniels, that establishment, Stacy, unless I'm looking at it incorrectly, we could move, if council's supportive, we could move on that fairly quickly without a budget issue. Well, oh, well, okay, here we go. No, I mean...
Do it, just do it.
No, there would be some. Some, okay. We don't have staff right now to support, I mean, that needs to get off that off the ground, and we talk a little bit about... It would need, there would be some, not a full-time person, but some part-time administrative help. There would be a little boost there. So we'll deal with that in the budget. Okay, I think I have direction.
Good stuff.
Unless there's any clarification from the council on what I plan to do, at the end of the retreat today, we're going to go back through everything we've discussed to make sure I've interpreted everything correctly, and we'll put this in writing to make sure you know exactly what actions we're going to take. So I believe, James, is there anything else that we need to look at here? I think we need to give James a round of applause. This is a much better methodology than what we used last year, would you agree?
It's a better way to frame it, yeah.
Better way to frame it? I see hesitation.
Well, I had some frustration with some of the answers, some of the categories I had to choose.
So perhaps we need to step back and look at the categories and...
But it was better than last year.
It's been better than last year, I think the problem is that sometimes one size doesn't fit all.
Okay, so there may be ways we want to step back and improve this. And I also want to point to Jason and the use of technology.
I think it's a lovely way to get some ideas out there, and I appreciate you giving us the opportunity to do that in this kind of format. I think it lets not only us, but residents kind of see, you know, what are the big, what are the big and the little things that we think are important in the city?
I think that's... I think it's a great method to get your issues in front of one another, so that I'm not a burden. Okay, council, I think lunch is going to be here. Oh, it's here, so we'll break, we'll get lunch, and then that will allow Keith and the next team to set up for the next presentation, your last presentation.